As you know, and I'm sure you've probably heard about, there is a lot of momentum building for the 119 corridor. There is a future vision, which you'll be hearing about shortly from Carly, around multimodal improvements that are anticipated over the next several years to be underway. But in the meantime, what we're here for today is to really get the public's input throughout the months of July and August regarding connectivity to the future Bus Rapid Transit line and a corridor-wide bikeway that is proposed in the corridor. So we're eager to hear your input, both as businesses and residents and stakeholders in the corridor, and look forward to your input. I did add to the chat the link to the study webpage where there are a couple pieces of additional options for you to give us input. So I encourage you to go there to learn more and to chime in. So Carly, I'll toss it back to you.
Great, thanks Audrey. So as Audrey mentioned, we're here virtually. When we first started to talk about this project, it was pre-COVID-19, and we were really excited about having a public workshop and really do wish that we're all here in the same high school gymnasium putting stickers on boards. But here we are virtually, and there's definitely some advantages here. We're able to all join during our lunch hour, and this is a long corridor, a big study area, so able to have attendance from folks from around the region. So really grateful for that, and we really do appreciate everyone's flexibility as we move here virtually. So not only are we having this town hall, but we've got, we had one previously, and we've got one August 12th that's in Spanish only. We also have an online survey and interactive web map. So lots of ways to engage and provide your input virtually. So to get us started with the agenda for this afternoon, I'll spend a little bit of time talking about background of the project. There's been a lot of work that's been done previously in this corridor that we'll be building off of and giving you a sense of what this study is focusing on. Definitely not here today to hear me talk, we're here to learn more about how you currently travel on the corridor, how you'd like to travel, and some challenges and opportunities biking, walking, and accessing transit. So really want to focus the majority of our time getting feedback from you all. You can do that by unmuting and chiming in with questions and comments, or by typing in the chat window as well, and Audrey will be managing the chat window and making sure to respond to those questions and comments as well. So we do have a few polling questions. This will be the only meeting where you're asked to take out your phone to participate in that polling, but are a really cool opportunity to see how the folks on the call, I've got over 30 of us, how everybody feels about some of the challenges and priorities on the corridor. And we're spending the second half of the meeting in a facilitated discussion, so I've got some questions and certain areas and themes that we'd like to cover. And then just the last few minutes talking about next steps. If you've got family and friends who want to provide input to, but weren't able to make it today, what are the different mediums to be able to give their feedback or any additional comments that you may have? So jumping in on project background, I know many of you are probably familiar, you found your way on this call, as to what the first and last mile gap is. So this is that distance, that space between your house and the bus stop, between the BRT station and your place of employment. And that barrier to accessing transit, or that first mile, last mile gap, could be a long trip distance. It could be that there's not adequate bicycle and walking facilities, or that you don't have transportation options available. It's a little bit too far to walk or bike, and there's not other ways to get to the bus stop. And it doesn't take a lot of research to know that the easier it is to accessing the transit system, the more likely people are to use it. So we've got a great BRT plan for the corridor, how do we increase access to that planned BRT? So what is BRT? Acronyms and jargon are plenty in transportation planning, so to unpack that a little bit. This is a proven transit system, it's fast, it's comfortable, it's reliable. So this is what differentiates Bus Rapid Transit from just any other fixed route transit, is that it focuses on reducing travel time and traveling at higher speeds that are competitive with driving, and because of this, it's able to have high ridership. So many of you are probably familiar with the Flatiron Flyer that travels along the US 36 corridor. That's a really great example of BRT in our region. So you can see here in this image some features of Bus Rapid Transit that we'll talk about that are specific to the proposed BRT on the State Highway 119 corridor. So you can see in the image on the right, there are two planned alignments for Bus Rapid Transit between Boulder and Longmont. There's the blue route and the orange route. So the blue route will travel every 15 minutes, and the orange route every 30 minutes, and they both travel along that same trunk along 119. Where they differ is when they reach the termini, we call them, so either Longmont or Boulder. So depending on your destination, you'll choose a route that will get you closest to your final destination. So these, both BRT routes will be center running, which means that that inner lane of the corridor will be dedicated to buses only, as well as carpoolers and toll-paying users. There'll be intersection improvements and technology that makes sure that this bus is traveling really efficiently. So similar to when fire trucks travel, when a bus is approaching an intersection, that signal's able to detect that bus and will turn green in anticipation of the bus's arrival. So really makes for efficient travel time. There's also a brand and a visual identity, so this helps kind of acknowledge what system you're using, so similar to Flatiron Flyer, that branding and that aesthetic is consistent throughout the corridor. You'll also pay the fare in advance of getting on the bus, which seems like a small thing to save time, but really adds up to make for an efficient travel time. There's five park-and-rides on the corridor, you can see them as shown in the P here, and this is a supplement to Future Rail. I just want to make sure you guys are seeing the right slide here, that it's in full presentation So let me just, in case.
Yeah Carly, I was still seeing the notes and everything underneath.
Oh, sorry, that's very strange. Let me just X out and start over. It's now showing the notes in a different format. Sorry guys, Zoom is always has challenges. Is that better?
It's back to the first section that you had shown, so...
It's just not full screen. It looks like...
You scrolled down to the bottom Carly, there was, go back to the actual PowerPoint tab again. Click on the right-hand side.
And now try and expand it.
Just go back to where you had it, just go to your slideshow and just go from current slide. It was working momentarily, and then it...
Is that working?
Yes Carly, that looks good.
Okay, sounds good. Sorry guys, not sure what happened there. So there's also, in addition to the BRT, there's a proposed bikeway on the corridor. So this is a multi-use path that's going to be running along the center median, so it's about eight miles in length all the way from Boulder to Longmont. So not only are we looking at first and last mile connections to the BRT stations, but also to the bikeway itself. So I know there's lots of questions on the bikeway, and this design is, this is in process too. So any specific questions to the bikeway, you can put in the chat window and we'll address, but know that this effort will have its own set of public engagement coming in 2021 as well, which is really exciting. So some future growth, significant growth on the corridor, which was part of the idea to invest significantly in this area. So we see that Weld County is going to be doubling in size between 2015 and 2040, and about 30% of the demand on the corridor is from Weld County users. So this is definitely, if you're experiencing congestion and delays currently on the corridor, over the next 20, 25 years, this is only going to be increasing. So with these multimodal improvements, definitely something to address those shifts and increases in demand. So how...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but what I'm seeing, and I think others are seeing, is a Google map, an aerial map.
Maybe I'm sharing my wrong screen. How about now?
That, I can see that perfectly, hope others can.
Looks good, looks good, yes.
Sorry guys, my technology skills, I'm not meant to be working from home. Working on it though. So these multimodal investments are resulting in a really significant impact in shifts in mode. So we're seeing almost a 70% drive-alone mode share currently, and with these investments in the managed lanes, in carpool lanes, in a bikeway, and BRT and first-last-mile solutions, we're seeing that go down to 65% drive-alone. Again, to folks, 4%, that doesn't seem like a lot, but in raw numbers, this is significant, and just the value of having this set of transportation options is significant. So what is this study looking at? There's a lot going on in the corridor, a lot of folks have questions about the bikeway, about BRT service. So how can we make sure that we're focusing our conversation onto the nature of this study? So we're looking at bicycle and pedestrian connections to BRT stations, so crossings of streets. And how do we get across 119? It's a really long, large corridor, really wide, and so I know currently, some of those crossings can feel unsafe, so we definitely want to talk about that. And then traveling along a corridor, so at that segment, is there not a wide enough sidewalk, not a sidewalk at all, not an on-street bike facility? So that's what we want to hear about regarding how you currently walk and bike around the State Highway 119 study area. We'll also be looking at wayfinding signage. So when you're at a fork in the road, you've got two options on a path, which way should you take to get to that BRT station, or to connect to that low-stress bike facility? So we're developing a set of branded wayfinding signage that will be used throughout the study area, so really similar to US 36 again here. And this also has, what destinations are nearby, and how far away are those destinations? And this can just make your experience really comfortable and intuitive. Transportation demand management is another set of recommendations. So I like to consider, the first part, we talked about bicycle and pedestrian connections, that's the supply side, that's what's on the street. And now this is the demand side. So when you leave your house every morning, how do you decide whether you'll drive to a park-and-ride, or you'll bike to the bus stop, or you'll drive all the way to your destination? These are these strategies that help inform our decisions as to what mode to take. So there are sets of incentives, such as ecopasses that are free, secure bike parking, or there are disincentives, there are fees to park. And so this combination of incentives and disincentives can inform our decisions and can make using the Bus Rapid Transit and connecting to BRT easier and more appealing for us. We're looking at shared parking as well, this is focused at the Gun Barrel Station. So a great example is if there's a church near a BRT station, that its parking lot's full on Sundays, but Monday through Friday, there's a lot of additional capacity for parking. How can we have conversations with these businesses in order to look at our peak parking demand times, such as Monday at 7:00 AM, and balance that out with their peak parking demand times? And this will limit the number of park-and-rides that are needed, which is a really great cost-savings approach, and builds relationships with businesses nearby as well. And the last recommendation is for microtransit. So this, some of you might have seen around the Boulder region, in Denver as well, and this is, it's kind of somewhere, if you think of Uber, Lyft on one side of the spectrum, your fixed route RTD bus on the other side, microtransit falls kind of in between. So you've got in this image here, a mid-sized vehicle, it runs somewhat on-demand, so you'll request your trip, but instead of it coming straight to your door like an Uber, you might have to walk a few blocks to where that microtransit shuttle will pick you up. And then instead of it coming right away, it runs on a, on a kind of a circulation, so you might have to wait up to 15 minutes for that. And this is a great way to access some of those large employment centers or dense residential areas that are a little bit too far from that Gun Barrel BRT station. So also something, we're looking at different operational characteristics for microtransit. So that was a lot of information, but happy to answer any questions as we move to the latter half here, but want to start with some just high-level polling questions to get a pulse of this group, to see how folks feel. So you can use your web browser on your computer, or you can take out your phone to join the polling. So we'll be using Poll Everywhere. So if you use your browser on your phone or your computer, you can go to pollev.com. Let me do this at the same time as everybody. And then when you have the opportunity to join, you can type in my name's CarlySeef120, and then click "Join." If you're texting, you can start a text message in the "To" box where you put the phone number, write 22333, and then write code in the message. And so the instructions are still at the top of this slide as well, but want to get started. If you're having trouble joining the poll, you can type in the chat window, and we'll make sure to address your questions. So what we're going to do is, it's available Word Cloud. So want to get kind of a vision, or what are the most important themes for what you want to see on the State Highway 119 corridor? So in the box, you can just start typing in one word at a time, and begin to enter that into the box, and as words are entered multiple times, you'll see them get bigger. So we'll see those prominent themes, those recurring items that folks agree upon being our largest word. So you can see that's starting to fill in, "safe" has risen to the top, which is great, really important priority that we're already beginning to address. If you do use two words, if you could hyphenate them, otherwise each word will come up on "Convenient" is also definitely important, we can unpack that a little bit, what does it mean to be convenient, or what makes something convenient? "Connected" as well. "Grade separated," that's going to be a good one, to talk about crossings, kind of at what intersections is that important? Or how, when a ray of aggregate crossings, how can we kind of simulate that really safe, comfortable experience? "Quick," kind of similar to "efficient." So trade-offs there, if you want a direct bikeway, what does that mean for what corridors we'll be designating for the bikeway? "Lower impact," some really good ones too. "Lofty," I love that, thinking big for sure. "Development," so transportation's always intricately tied to land use. "Affordable," cost is going to be a good one, when we think about what those options are, you're already paying for your RTD pass, or kind of your BRT ticket, so making sure when we think about microtransit, that cost is considered. "Clean," pollution. Yeah, less emissions. So a lot of words that are similar theme, that are framed differently. "Pleasant," so we'll talk about streetscaping and landscaping. This is so fun, I don't know about others, but it's really great to see these evolve and these themes to pop up. So I think I gave everyone the ability to write four words, just to make sure we hear from everybody. "Bike-friendly," "safety." So also I see "fares." "One-seat ride," that's a great one, that's the challenge with first-last mile is that transfer. So how can we lower that barrier, or kind of make that experience feel really integrated? "Vibrant," "clean." Great. Well, why don't others take themselves off mute and start to talk about the words that they chose, or what you're seeing here, anything from others that you didn't expect, or things that you did expect that maybe haven't grown as big as you would have expected? I think, Jerry, are you talking, but on mute maybe?
Carly, is he...
It looks like he's trying.
Well, while we're waiting to find out, one of the words that is foundational to me in this corridor is just safety. I think in general, whether you're driving, bicycling, walking, improving overall safety in this corridor is a foundational core value and goal for the project overall.
Any other thoughts? Okay, we can move, we've got two more polling questions we can move on to as well. Okay, so this is a multiple-choice question, where everyone gets three responses. So what are the top barriers to prevent you from walking or biking? So if you already walk or bike, what would make you walk or bike? More, and try to think of other first and last mile connections. So if currently the bolt and the J aren't transit routes to use, then you can think about other first-last mile connections, or just State Highway 119 in general, so maybe not to get to transit, but you're experienced biking around this corridor, what does that feel like? So is it a lack of bike facilities, and that can be trails, or on-street facilities, or pedestrian facilities, so sidewalks or trails? Focus on crossings, it looks like that's definitely rising to the top. The travel distance itself, so that's something we can think about, what is in the toolbox of first-last mile solutions that can overcome those distances? Not a popular one yet, but if your place of employment is along the corridor, and you want a secure place to lock your bike, or a place to shower, that's not available, that's keeping you from biking. Or that the paths are indirect, the street network along the corridor definitely lacks in connectivity, and so maybe as the crow flies, the distance isn't that long, but the only way to walk or bike to the proposed BRT area is too far. Not enough streetscaping, so I heard a lot in that word cloud. "Vibrant," "clean," "comfortable," so all of that is kind of part of this holistic effort, which includes landscaping, and places to sit, shade, that makes something more comfortable. And then personal safety or security. So this might be, there's not enough lighting at night, or secure places to lock your bike. So indirect connections, that's coming up and rising to the top as well, which is great as we think about what are the opportunities for trails, are those providing direct connections, or does the community prefer on-street bike facilities that will be more direct and will shorten travel time for walking or biking? And then crossing is still high, long-trip distances is growing. So folks want to take themselves off mute and talk about what they voted for, and maybe if they've got ideas of how to address that challenge, or specific locations where they feel that challenge is especially prominent? Is everyone in their lunch food coma already? Sweepy crowd.
Yeah, this is August. This is Joe from Avery Brewing, great to meet everybody. I think, you know, Gun Barrel is where we speak from, and I'm assuming that maybe some other people from non-Gun Barrel spots have a similar issue. I think the last mile and the first mile, considering Gun Barrel, it's the patchwork of trails, and lack of direct connection between Gun Barrel and some of the broader bike path, bike system. That's something, you know, we brought up in the past, so it really is that. So I guess my question would be, you know, are you connected, or to, it might be out of your jurisdiction in this project, but are you guys able to work with those relevant agencies that can affect that or change that?
Yeah, that's a great question, Joe. And we do have, we have a stakeholder group, as well as a project management team. So the stakeholder group is a larger group of around 20 folks, of large employers, and folks who are important in making those changes. And then our project management team, I think a few of those folks are on the line now. We've got Phil Greenwald in Longmont, representing the city of Longmont, Jeff Butts representing Boulder County, and Danny O'Connor representing the city of Boulder. I also forgot to mention RTD and CDOT, Dr. Cog on the Stakeholder Committee as well, so all of those key agencies. So a key part of this plan, because it's so inter-jurisdictional, is to make sure we're bringing all of the right people to the table and having those conversations. And that sets the implementation of these recommendations, it sets them up for success, because those who need to take it over for their and responsible for implementation are bought in and providing these ideas.
Carly, can you hear me now?
Yeah, great Jerry, I gotta get it set up.
My question earlier was, what's the impact going to be on projected impact and feature on traffic, both on the new 119, as well as on side streets? Because we live off of 73rd, and we get a lot of traffic going to 119, because people think they can come down our street at 60 miles an hour and save two minutes.
That's a great question. And the PEL that was done prior to this, I believe dug into traffic definitely on the 119 corridor, but I'm not sure on surrounding roadways. So I don't know, that might be something kind of a little bit beyond the first-last-mile scope. So Chris Quinn or others, if you've got ideas there, feel free to chime in, or reference in the chat window some of the findings from that analysis. But those are, Jerry, some good points of fast travel speeds are going to impact people's experience walking and biking on the corridor, so things to consider in the first-last-mile realm as well. Sorry, Chris, do you want to chime in?
Hi Jerry, this is Chris Quinn, I'm with RTD. And yeah, when we were doing the traffic analysis as part of the alternatives analysis for the BRT, we did do some extensive traffic modeling on 119 itself. We also looked at the individual intersections, and what traffic delay would be like, and what the congestion levels would be. We didn't model what would happen on the side streets, but I think it's fair to assume that by introducing more capacity on 119, and alleviating the delays there, that we would be taking, we would be removing vehicles that would otherwise be cutting through neighborhoods to try to avoid some of the congestion and delay on the main facility of 119.
Thanks, Chris. Any other thoughts?
If you have any information on the proportion of boardings that happen in like the city of Longmont and the city of Boulder versus boardings in Gun Barrel or Niwot, and the number of passengers that come from those destinations?
I don't have off the top of my head the distribution of boardings. We do have some analysis of what the kind of origin/destination, we call it, so where people are coming from and where they're going to, based off of previous studies. So I can get that over to you, and once I take a look at that in particular. So I don't know off the top of my head, but if others do, Chris, you're off mute, so...
No, yeah, I was just going to say, I can't speak from memory on that. As would be expected, most passengers were getting on in the Longmont area and heading towards Boulder in the AM, and then the reverse in the PM. But my apologies, I don't remember the breakdowns by segments of the corridor, sorry.
What about folks' unsafe crossings? So we heard from Joe about the indirect connections, which is that kind of the number-one response right now, crossings is right up there. Any feedback on what type of...
Could you do a map of the bike route?
Yeah, I've got a map of this study area up, which is helpful for navigating around. We also have a map to provide input, so this might be good, because we can see where other folks have identified they don't feel safe, and we can see the proposed BRT stations Yeah, "grade separated" came up, what, how do folks, kind of what does it take for an aggregate crossing to feel safe? Are folks talking about crossing State Highway 119 itself, or some of the crossings in the surrounding areas of the station? There's some large arterial, State Highway 52 is there, Airport Road, State Highway 66. Are there certain things about crossings? Is it long crossings, is it site distance from vehicle... Is it site distance from vehicles, fast travel speeds? We heard in the last virtual town hall, not getting detected as a bicyclist or accessibility of push buttons. Lots of different things that go into making a safe crossing.
I would say, this is Joe again at Avery, and bicyclists around this area as well. So some direct experience. I think the lookout road crossings are a little sketchy. There's a nice underpass that's there, but it kind of leads to some commercial spots. And understood that, you know, making new bike paths and lanes is a whole nother issue. But I would say that the hotspot would be the lookout road crossings around the King Supers and west of there to the train track crossings. They definitely have improved, still could use some love, I think.
Great, that's a good one, Joe, thanks.
The bicycle route's going to be between the lanes, is that right?
Yes, it'll be in the center median. So that's that, I don't know if this is where we're going with that, but a challenge of making sure that we address, how do you get to that center median safely? It's going to be a big part.
So you're not going to utilize the Lobo trail very much, if any?
We're definitely connecting to existing trails. And I saw Lobo in the word cloud is going to be essential. So that's a great asset and something that's used really highly for a lot of recreational cyclists. So making sure that we're making those clear connections between Lobo and the State Highway 119 corridor and leveraging both that trail as well as existing on-street facilities. We've got one more polling question. We can move on to the next one. So this is about priorities. So there's a lot of ideas out there, a lot of need areas and different types of ways we can address these challenges. There's only limited funding. So which of these are most important to you? You actually get three options or three votes, which helps. As I know, we've talked about a number of these as being challenges. I do want to call out the last three are a little bit new to this conversation. So ease of navigating the BRT system. This falls under transportation demand management. It includes things like trip planning apps. Wayfinding can be incorporated in there as well. It's also in its own category. Where is the schedule located? Making sure you know when and where the BRT is coming. And then shared mobility also. So this can be in the form of bike share, which is electric or not electric, scooters, which are docked or not docked. So some of these exist in the Boulder-Longmont area already. Some of these would be newer conversations, which we talk about docked bike share. Where would those docks be located? What would be some of the operational parameters of that? And then we talked about microtransit as well. So it looks like crossings, again, this is a top priority. In the last vote, people weren't feeling safe and that's something that they really want to address. And then bicycle pathways, so both on-street and off-street. So I'd love to hear more from folks. We talked about the crossings on the last slide, but what about the pathways? What types of facilities are you most comfortable on? Are you biking with young children and you prefer an off-street trail? Or are you trying to minimize trip distance and you want an on-street direct pathway? That's one question, but would love to hear other thoughts on those who voted for pedestrian pathways or bicycle pathways.
My name's Matt and I work for a bicycling advocacy nonprofit. And this corridor lies along a significant commuter route in the Boulder County Transportation Master Plan. So we tend to favor a large separated bicycle facility to make it more direct for bicycle commuting.
Yeah, that's a good point, Matt. Great to hear from that advocacy community too. I'm sure these are conversations you have frequently in your meetings.
Well, I think if you look in the TMP, there's a complementary system of paths, which would be more recreational. So along these major corridors in Boulder County, cyclists are trying to commute. They're trying to mimic what has traditionally been an auto commute. And they just want to get to point A to point B, from point A to B.
Yeah, and those different user types is important. How do we accommodate recreational users and commuters? And their priorities are going to be different. And directness is definitely one of those differentiation points. And this is a big commuter corridor, so something to think about. What about on the transportation demand management side? Intuitiveness of the system, that can mean a lot of different things. What were folks thinking who voted for this one? What does that look like? I'm going to start calling on people.
I'll make a comment, but not about that. I didn't vote for that one.
Yeah, yeah, feel free.
For vehicle parking, the only thing we want, like in Gun Barrel, is to have more people parking in our limited parking just so they can get on the bus. We want, parking is just going to be, you know, I'm sorry, my brain. If people are going to need to park their cars and leave them all day so they can, you know, use the bus system to get to and from work or something, there needs to be dedicated parking for that because we're kind of already full up with all the developments going on in Gun Barrel.
Yeah, that's a great point. And there is a park and ride planned for 100 spaces at the Gun Barrel station that will be dedicated for transit users. I think the microtransit that's planned for the station will also has the opportunity to limit demand on parking because now instead of driving those shorter distances, there's a shuttle that can help provide those connections as well. Any other comments from folks we haven't heard from on this?
I'll just make a quick comment about microtransit. I just see it, you know, the last mile between a station and a place of work, I think there's a great opportunity there to get people, you know, from a BRT station to their office or place of work, particularly like in East Boulder, where there's just such a great concentration of employers. But there is no easy way to get from those places of employment over to the station at Boulder Junction, for example. So it's a huge missed opportunity, I think. And I think a microtransit type of last mile connection would be a great opportunity there.
Great, well, that's great to hear. And that's something, yeah, thinking about what is the threshold for adding a connection? So I know that that can decrease and adds to the travel time potentially. So what we're really thinking is how to make that a really seamless experience. So good to hear that that's something folks are excited about.
To piggyback on that, on the first mile element as well, looking at it from, I'm with CU Boulder and one of the BRT routes is planned to come to the CU campus. But that particular route runs down the far west side of Longmont, along Airport Road, I believe. And so for people that want to ride that to get to campus that live in Longmont and are not on the west side, will need good transit service to get across town to the stations where they can board that particular route because the other route doesn't get them to campus.
Yeah, feeder bus routes isn't something we talked about as it's a little bit outside the scope of this study, but something that is really important. Lots of great opportunities on either end in Boulder and Longmont to have those feeder routes. But how can we make sure that there's time transfers and that those connections are there in person? So thanks, David, it's great to have CU input here. Sorry, Susan, it looks like you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I had one more comment kind of from before as well, which is that I think the biggest challenge to all of this is that it's not convenient. Again, I done the bus into Boulder from Gun Barrel and I put my bike on, you know, the front of the bus and everything. You know, these were before BRT. And quite frankly, getting to the bus and then where the bus takes me in Boulder, all of it was completely inconvenient and it took more time than if I just got in my car and went. I think your biggest obstacle here is going to be that where your stops are going to be located on 119th coming out of Gun Barrel is inconvenient for just about all of Gun Barrel. I mean, it's not even close to any residential areas per se. So I'm not sure who's going to want to take the time to do it. I mean, some will, but I think that's more challenging than making it. You can have all the parking in the world and the most beautiful crossings and everything, but if it's going to take more time to get to where you want to go than it, you know, than it does to just dump in your car and do your 15-minute errand, I'm not sure who will use it.
Do you think it's the way the street grid is set up? If there were some additional bicycle and pedestrian connections through some of those business lots, that would help reduce the travel time?
Maybe, I mean, the buses going through Gun Barrel, in my opinion, are pretty inconvenient overall. The times are, you know, they aren't that frequent. And again, from my house, I'm on the east side of the lakes. So from where I am, and I'm not even in the Country Club area or Heatherwood, which are even farther out, but from where I am to walk to a bus stop would take me somewhere between 10 and 15 minutes. And then I have to wait for the bus. And then the bus to take me where, you know, I've used it to pick up my car from the shop. To take me there takes another 20 minutes. If I had to drive directly to the shop, I could get there in 10 minutes, you know, in just about the amount of time it takes me to just catch the bus, I'm already at my location. So if, and that's again, using the existing bus, that's using the 205. That's not even talking about 119 and BRT. So again, for Gun Barrel, I'm not speaking for more urban type areas. You know, Boulder is more urban, you know, and Longmont's got more urban type areas. But if it isn't easy enough to get to it, I don't know who's going to really use it unless they're doing like a regular commute. I'm not doing a regular commute.
Yeah, that's great feedback, thinking about different trip types. And so not just for those maybe traveling to places of employment, but other destinations. How can we make those really accessible and efficient and convenient? And so that's something to think about. And with microtransit in the Gun Barrel area, what are those stops? Or what is the service area? And that kind of travel time and wait time are our priority. How can we bring those to the top? Great, I came up with a list of some themes that we thought were important. So anticipating what would be in the word cloud. So maybe these might strike some ideas or some challenges that you currently face. So would love to hear, we've talked a bit about some of these. But visibility and comfort, a lot goes into that. So maybe some other specific locations where you don't feel like you're visible or thinking about all ages and abilities when you ride with your kiddos. The comfort's not there because of the speed of vehicles. What are some other challenges that you're seeing when biking and walking in this area? And Susan, I actually added flexibility to this list this morning. I was thinking about the different trip types and, you know, travel patterns have inertia and to change them, it's hard, it takes time, you get used to certain things. And so being able to accommodate all of those different trip types and circumstances, the world is changing a lot. I know our travel patterns have changed. So how can we have trip options in place to accommodate all of these different needs?
Can I ask another question? The junction, you know, you have one of the routes was going to downtown Boulder. One of the routes was going to the junction, but the junction is really not being used as a junction right now. So I wonder, is there other plans to make that on the RTD side a little bit more like an actual transit center? So that if people do go there, there is another place they can go after that? Because right now, there's nowhere really else to go.
Yeah, I'll also see if Chris has an answer to that on the RTD side.
Yeah, hi, this is Chris Quinn with RTD again. And that facility was designed and implemented as kind of a future, for future growth in the area. We recognize that there's not a lot right there right now, but as with the buildout of the Google campus and a lot of the other city plans for additional growth, we would anticipate that more services will be introduced there as the demand continues to increase, not only right in the station vicinity itself, but also in the East Boulder area in general.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, Michael, go ahead.
I had my hand up earlier and I.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I know, I do this all the time. I realized people probably didn't see my hand up. And maybe this is not the forum for this, maybe Chris can address this better. It's, I'm a little concerned about a different kind of access issue. I feel like the R in BRT is maybe meaning replacement instead of rapid. We're losing the Bolt for this, is this correct?
The intent is that the existing Bolt services would be rolled into the new patterns, yeah. Along with the J as well, sorry.
Right, right, I'm sorry, I knew that. My specific concern, I actually have very good access. I live in Niwot, a quick walk to the stop. I teach classes at Front Range and that, you know, someday students are going to be coming back there. I'm really concerned that we're going to be underserving a portion of the population that really relies on those not-so-rapid stops along the Bolt. And if, I guess, I'm wondering, is there a way to keep that accessibility available for people who are not so much interested in rapidity as they are in rapidness, as they are in access, you know? Being able to get to school when they don't have a car, they don't have, you know, that's their route.
Yeah, very good statements, very good questions, comments. One of the things, and our service planners might slap me for saying this, but one of the great things, I'm going to put on my BRT salesman's hat right now. One of the great things about bus rapid transit is the fact that unlike, say, rail, a bus does have a lot more flexibility. Right now, we have identified, and this was after some pretty extensive outreach to both public, elected officials, local jurisdictional staffs, we came upon the routing that we, what we're showing right now. Having said that, is if we realize that there is demand, whether it's a certain time of day, certain locations, because of new development, we do have the flexibility of being able to provide specific routing that could serve this. And I don't want to go overboard with my BRT salesmanship, but that is one of the great things about buses, is that higher level flexibility that we can provide. So short answer, if we think the demand is there, you know, we always have the balance, and I think in your question or your comment at the beginning, you preface this pretty well, is there's always a trade-off between trying to have the most rapid ride versus serving as many locations as possible and just trying to establish that balance. But I think we do, long-term, have the flexibility of being able to work in, where we, being able to serve where it's going to be needed most.
I appreciate that. And I'll say one thing, a lot that I'd never even thought about until this presentation. And thank you, Carly, this has been wonderful, by the way, is the microtransit element. I had not really considered that as a possible solution to the problem. I'm seeing, say, with that particular population, if there's a way to hub them somewhere and then move them to a location like Front Range, that would be a wonderful thing. So thank you for offering that as maybe another part of the solution.
Hey, Michael, this is Jeffrey Butts with Boulder County Transportation Planner, and I've been looking at that connection there. So appreciate you bringing this up. Is there some opportunities to provide, say, like some sort of pathway up towards Hoover and 119 or some sort of increased connectivity? Right now, it is a little bit of a jog around, but as the bird flies, it's shorter. And I've been curious about that a little, you know, I've been looking at maps and it looks like there's some potential, but not real sure about the.
but not real sure about the the university or the college there and the relationships with nearby businesses. Or has there been any discussion of increasing connectivity, providing a trail or anything like that? Is there any opportunities there?
If you're asking if there's any conversation in Front Range, I'll just say none that I'm aware of. I would, I would love to find. I'll tell you what, I'll try to find that out for you and get back to you. But I have a feeling, no, there are a lot of obstacles. I take the lobo, actually, because I'm not real fond of, you know, circling back around down Hoover. But that's, that's me, you know, I can do that. I'm I'm close to both. I'll see what I can find out if anybody's even talking about this at Front Range. I have a feeling they're not.
Well, Michael, just this is Audrey, and I am in connection with leadership there. And this area and connectivity to Front Range is a core connection that we are definitely going to be looking at at a deeper level, separate from these public meetings at a more station, station area level. So we'll be in touch, and it's nice to meet you.
Good. Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Good to meet you, too.
Is there, does anybody know if you're planning to put underpasses at the major crossings?
I think the original or the current State Highway 119 bikeway plan has six or seven grade separated crossings. And and that's, this design is still in process. So definitely things that will be discussed in 2021 as a part of that continuing process as well.
Because if a trail is in between the two lanes, I don't know if traffic, the car traffic is gonna naturally be expecting something to be in the middle of those lanes when they're making their move to, you know, do a, you know, to to cross at a cross street. That could be potentially dangerous, you know, with visibility.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point, Michael. And definitely something at the higher speed, higher volume intersections, that grade separated will be considered. And at other intersections that, you know, it's ensured that visibility is very high and that there's dedicated movements to reduce conflicts. So currently, there might be, when you're at a light, a green ball, which means you can go straight or turn right, leading to bicyclists and pedestrians. And now expecting a higher number of people walking and biking, there'll be a red arrow to turn white right to make sure that that we're having as as few potential conflicts as possible. So definitely re looking at those intersections, at the signals and at the what's on the ground, the painting and the signage in place to make sure that's that's a really safe and comfortable experience.
And one other point, has there been any studies related to what the admissions, the exhaust fumes are with cyclist, cyclist path running through the middle? I've never experienced a path in the middle of a, you know, two-lane highway situation. Has there been a a study to determine what that would be, if that's?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm sure there's been research out there to to look at that. But definitely tough to find a large enough easement that's direct in this area to provide that access. So the center median was, you know, an option that did provide this directness and convenience that we've heard a lot from folks. So I'm not sure if folks have, there's been research directly on this quarter on that topic, but I'm sure the designs will will limit that that kind of nearby traffic with landscaping and other features as well or limit the inconvenience.
To to help that out, you know, trying to utilize parts of the lobo trail, parts that are close to 119, you know, might, might, you know, save, you know, some of the crossings and but the lobo trail, you know, really weaves around. So
Yeah. Yeah, trade offs.
Good luck. That sounds exciting.
Yeah. And for folks who who want to learn more and dive into and participate in the future of the corridor wide bikeway, Boulder County will be getting that final design in 2021. So that'll be the perfect opportunity to to dive in there. So and the lobo trail will still be in place. That's not going to be going away. So it really is intended to serve two different cycling markets. One is more of a recreational market and one is more of a commuter market. So we're fortunate that both facilities will will be in place in this corridor, hopefully. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Audrey. So we've got a few minutes left, which I want to go over our next steps. So there's lots of other ways to stay engaged, as I mentioned in the beginning. There's an interactive web map that I'll pull up, a survey, and then all of the material is in both English and Spanish. And our third town hall will be in Spanish. So definitely spread the word and and stay tuned on our website as well. Later in 2020, early 2021, there'll be draft material available as well. So our website that many of you might have visited has some background information as well as links to all the different mediums of engagement. So there's our our survey available, which we'd love for you to fill out, and then the web map. Just want to review, this might be new to some of you, but is a really cool tool to use to see how others in the community feel as well as to identify specific locations that you might have challenges. So you can click on others' comments and see what they said and and some more details about why they don't feel safe. And then if you agree with that, you can upvote it. So there's lots of both pins regarding specific point locations as well as lines, which are our corridors where where folks have comments. So definitely jump in there and add to the the pins and lines. I think we've got over 100 now, which is is exciting. And yeah, definitely stay tuned. And we really appreciate everyone's time during lunch to to provide feedback. This was a great conversation, and we got lots of good input that we'll make sure to incorporate and consider as a part of plan recommendations. Thanks, everyone, and enjoy the rest of your Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.